Well, it's almost eight thirty, everybody, so. Quinn, Mark, this isn't church, you guys can. You don't have to sit in the back row.
What's that?
This isn't church, you don't have to sit in the back row. Well, good morning, everybody, I'm gonna call the Delta County Board of Commissioners right in leading tour for December five, twenty twenty-three. Uh, please stand and join me in flagging your region. Thank you. We have any additions or edits to our agenda this morning?
So we will remove item number seven off of Commissioner Business Board's consideration of a resolution for maintenance on Mystic Mesa Road. And move that to the B O C C meeting on December nineteenth.
Thank you. Nothing else? The agenda will stand as amended. Constituent time. Anybody like to visit with the Commissioners this morning? Good morning to you, glad you're here.
Thank you.
Anybody online?
None, sorry.
Hearing none, we'll move on to County Clerk, Terry Stevenson.
Good morning, Commissioners, and Robbie, I have the minutes for the November twenty-first. B O C C regular meeting, um, are there any changes, deletions, or additions?
I have none.
I have none, none here, Terry.
I also have the minutes for the November thirtieth special B O C C meeting, again, any changes, deletions, or additions?
None here.
Looks good to me, same, thank you.
I also have, uh, your consideration of an application for Colorado liquor sales room for Zen Zen Gardens. Located at twelve four ninety-eight thirty-seven ninety road. Um, typically, we do not see these applications until after they receive their limited winery license. Um, the applicant requested that we run concurrent with her sending her a winery license to the state, because they are the ones that issued that license. Um, so we could go ahead and approve this contingent upon her receiving her limited. Winery license.
Now, you said the address is thirty-seven ninety, and I've got thirty-seven hundred road here.
Thirty-seven ninety.
Thirty, yeah, it's thirty-seven ninety on the application.
Well, on the agendas.
Yeah.
I might have. But it is thirty-seven ninety.
Okay.
Well, I will move that the board approve the, uh, application for, uh, liquor sales room. For Zen Zen Gardens at one-two-four-nine-eight thirty-seven ninety road in Peonia. Uh, contingent upon them receiving their, uh, license from the state.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I have this morning.
Thank you, Terry. Commissioner Business?
Hey, moving to resolution for your consideration adopting the twenty-twenty-four budget for Delta County, State of Colorado. You have the resolution in front of you with all of the budgeted expenditures through each county office, department, and fund. For the general fund, for the road and bridge fund. American Rescue Fund, booking fees, health department, human services, capital improvement, grant projects, conservation trust. Contingency Fund, E nine-one-one Fund, Economic Development Fund. Employment Benefit Trust, Energy Development Enterprise Fund, Fairgrounds, Fairboard, Inmate Welfare. Lodging Tax, Open Space, Pilt, Self-Insurance, and Safety Improvement Fund. And then in, under section two, you have the amount from reserve required for each of the respective funds. As well as from the general property tax where appropriate. To give you the final balance on each of the funds. You'll see that the, uh, revenues are also listed. I want to put on the record that Leona Anderson did an incredible job with all of the complexities this year with the twenty-twenty-four budget. As well as all of the last-minute changes that had to be made. And so, Leon, I want to especially thank you on the record for this, and then Susan, putting in payroll is never easy, especially when the percentages. Keep changing, so Susan, thank you as well. So with that, Commissioners, I want to commend our stars, our finance stars, and realize that this is their prom season.
I think the Commissioners would echo that, and even more, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you guys very much. And thank, and thank you, Robbie, for all your effort. Commissioners, any questions, comments on the proposed resolution here? Uh, just, just a comment, you know, this, uh, this budget is pretty high. Um, it, it's definitely not our normal budget. Uh, but as part of this budget is an incredible amount of grant money that's gonna be used towards construction projects. Both, uh, here on the, on the jail, and then also at the, uh. Fairgrounds for a trail, so, uh. You know, I'm hoping that, uh, next year, our budget drops down to a little more respectable level, so.
We've been saving.
Now, I'd echo, and the comments already have been made, thanks to the staff. I'm sure the County Assessor, Jolene. And her staff have been very diligent in getting all the mill levies and percentages and trying to get that figured out, but, uh, again, thanks to all the staff and Robbie for. Getting this put together. What resolution number are we?
This would be number twenty-three.
Yep. Why move that we approve? The resolution adopting the twenty-twenty-four budget for Delta County, State of Colorado. For the twenty-twenty-four budget, and Commissioner signed the resolution, number twenty-twenty-three R twenty-three.
I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Hold on, which one do you want to use as the original here? Go ahead, Robbie.
Next for your consideration is to appropriate the sums of money to each of the departments, again, the department heads and the elected officials have, have been incredible as always. Keeping expenses as low and, and, uh, working to solicit. Additional revenue, and so greatly appreciate all of the cooperation and partnership of the elected officials and, and department heads as you appropriate these funds.
Mike? I will, uh, done, I will move that the board adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash R dash twenty-four. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners concerning the appropriation of sums of money to the various departments and funds of the County of Delta, State of Colorado, for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. And, uh. Just for, uh. Making the, making the gut hurt a little bit, the total expenditure for this budget is fifty-nine million, five hundred and four dollars and three, five hundred and four thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And just as a reminder, we will not set the mill levy until after the first of the year, based on the additional information that Jolene and her. Staff are working on to be in compliance with recent legislation.
So Commissioners, hang on to the. That final resolution in your package, Terry. Good. Thank you. Robbie, thank you.
Thank you, Leona, Susan.
Yes, thank you guys very much.
Next for your consideration, then, is the final bid tally for the design build ADA ramp at the Brown Building.
So, uh. As everyone's aware, we purchased the Brown Building. Uh. And they're, just due to the age of the building, there are some ADA issues. Um, as in a constant attempt to update our ADA plan throughout this entire campus. Uh, we determined that it was gonna be, uh. Much more cost-effective to put a ramp at the Brown Building versus trying to do an elevator. Uh, this will serve the upstairs, the downstairs currently has a ramp, there's just not one for the upstairs. Um, the tenants, uh, move out of the upstairs at the end of the year, based upon the lease contract we have with them. And after the end of the year, we will be, uh. Commencing to build this ramp. And move county staff offices over into that upstairs. So, uh, we had two bidders, uh, first one was North Peak. Uh, they came in at fifty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. Uh, the second bidder did not fill out the proper forms, uh, so it was thrown out. Um, but I will tell you, their number was considerably higher than the first bidder, so. I recommending we, we, uh, accept the bid for bidder number one.
Anybody from Delta County?
No.
Pick up paperwork?
No.
Okay, thank you. Why move that we accept the bid for the. ADA ramp at the Brown Building and awarded to bidder number one, North Four, North Peak Incorporated, out of Grand Junction. The dollar amount is fifty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-five cents.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, next for your consideration is signature for letter of support for Solar Energy International, application for designation as an enterprise zone contribution project. Uh, you historically have signed this letter for S E I, and they are asking for a continual letter of support for going into twenty-twenty-four.
Questions on that, Commissioners? Pretty standard. Oh, I will move that the, uh, board approved and sign the, uh, letter of support for Solar Energy International's application. Uh, for designation as enterprise zone contribution project. Date of November tenth, twenty-twenty-three.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you, Rob.
Okay, next is your consideration, letter of support for Colorado Counties Inc. to the Colorado River Drought Task Force, and Commissioner Coons will let you provide the detail here.
Certainly. At our Western District meeting here last week, um, it was brought up that. The Colorado River Drought Task Force is quickly coming to a conclusion, C C I would like, um. To submit a letter outlining their values and priorities to the drought task force. Uh, they provided a draft for us, um. Based off of the Gunnison Basin River, uh, letter to Task Force, and also the Mesa County. Uh, emphasizing funding for aging infrastructure. And improving the permitting processes that these water projects have to go through. Um, it'd be my recommendation to the Commissioners that we indicate C C I that we support this and add our names to it.
Why move that we. Send a letter of support to the Colorado River Drought Task Force as outlined by Chairman Coons, and Commissioner sign it.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Next for your consideration is letter of support to the Color, Colorado Water Conservation Board for the application from Colorado State University to study cow pea production and marketability. Cow pea is a crop that has reduced water consumption, uh, capability, and is, uh, works well with the high salt located in this area.
Questions on this one, Commissioner? So, I, I did a little bit of looking on this, this. Outpy thing, does, is there anybody around here that's actually? Done this, Robbie, that you?
No, this is a, a trial to see if it will work and to determine the marketability before it's being promoted to producers, then. A logical place for a land-grant university to be effective is to. To find out where the holes are in a, in a crop before you put it out there for production.
Yeah, I, I just was curious, it was the first I'd ever heard of it, and when I read about it, I just. Curious, so. I gotta ask, what's cow pea look like?
Ask Google. I don't know off the top of my head.
But if they can make that work.
Yeah. I would imagine it looks like all the other legumes, but I don't know for sure.
It's not. Anyway, we'll. It, it, it looks similar to a, uh, it's, it's. See if I can find, I looked it up, it's got longer pods. Well, I'm getting the circle of death here, otherwise I'd show you a picture.
C W C B then requires a letter from the County Commissioner for each of their respective grant applications, so this is in line with what you've done for the piping of the ditches and the. Improved infrastructure grants that have come before you for C W C B.
Why move that we. Support the letter, uh, support to the Colorado Water Conservation Board. Uh, for the team application to, to study cow pea production and marketability.
I'll second. Any other discussion? Well, that does have quite a bit of. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. So done.
Okay, and then Mystic Mesa will move to December nineteenth for your consideration. Ms. Lindy.
Good morning, that's afternoon, we have, um, on the calendar, sixty-eight P M, the Republican Party meeting.
That's been moved to, to December twelfth.
Thank you. Um, December seventh, nine to nine-thirty, the C C I Public Land Steering Committee Budget and News Setting Meeting. Still haven't been on. Um, December seventh, nine A M to four P M, Destination Blueprint, Delta County Tourism Stakeholder Meeting. December seventh, eleven to twelve-thirty, Water and Land Committee Meeting. December twelfth, ten A M to twelve P M, Work Session, Community Wildfire Protection Plan. December thirteenth, four-thirty to five-thirty, Work Session, Land Use Code with Commissioners and the Planning Department. Um, December fourteenth, seven-thirty to eight-thirty A M, coffee with Commissioner Mike Lane, that'll be at Q Room, Coffee Shop in Delta. December nineteenth, we have a Board of County Commissioners Regular Business Meeting at eight-thirty. December nineteenth, three-thirty to four-thirty, we have a Board of Health Meeting. Um, December twenty-fifth, the Delta County offices will be closed in observance of Christmas. Um, and that is what I have for the Commissioners' calendar for December twenty-twenty-three. I'm missing anything.
Do we have a road and bridge on the nineteenth?
We do.
Um, I mean, I missed that. I'll make sure that's in there. You want to move that Republican meeting, anything else?
I have nothing, too.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Uh, seeing no other business come before the Board of Commissioners until ten A M.
You want new information?
Oh, yeah, let's do a jail report, say, I laid him out to do that. Um, jail reports. Uh, jail report for Sunday, November twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, male inmates, twenty-five, County Jail, female inmates, County Jail, five. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, three, female inmates, Department of Corrections, zero, for a total of thirty-three. Average daily inmate population for the week of. Uh, November nineteenth through the twenty-sixth, thirty-seven point five-three. Uh, Delta County Detention Report for Sunday, December third, male inmates, County Jail, twenty-seven. Female inmates, County Jail, five. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, three, female inmates, Department of Corrections, zero, for a total of thirty-five. Average daily inmate population for the week of November twenty-sixth through December three, thirty-eight point eight. Any other business before the board this morning? Hearing none, we'll, um, recess until ten A M, plan. Thank you, everybody. Can you buy yourself today?
Yes, sir. Kate's not doing well, uh, Brittany's here, but she's, she's watching the wine.
Trimway, correct?
Good morning again, everybody, it is ten o'clock, we're gonna come back on the record, um, for December five, twenty-twenty-three, for planning, Austin, I'll turn it over you.
All right, um, so I'm gonna be giving the presentation today, I apologize, I don't have a visual presentation to follow along, uh, with the staff report. Uh, but hopefully you guys have all the information you need, uh, to. Address these two issues, um, so our first case is, uh, P L N two-two dash zero four eight, Missouri's L L C, the Brently subdivision. Um, on October eighteen, twenty-twenty-two, the B O C C approved a preliminary plat for a four-lot subdivision. From an approximately twenty-six point six acre parcel located through the west of nineteen-hundred road and south of East Road. Accepting a final plat was a ministerial action by a board to certify conditions of the preliminary plat, been met, uh, right of way, is not required for the subdivision. And, uh, road, uh, for the nineteen-hundred road was dedicated with the, um, get minor subdivision. Uh, staff has reviewed all of the submitted documents and consulted the applicable agencies that are responsible. Um, and all, uh, final fees have been paid, there are. Um, staff received public comment, which is attached to your packet with concern to outdoor lighting placed on the manufactured homes that are to be placed in lots. The staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners accept the final plat for the P L N twenty-two dash zero four eight, Missouri's L L C. And authorize to, uh, excuse me, authorize the chair to sign the final plat.
Thank you. Questions, comments here? Commissioners?
No, I have none.
I think we, uh. I know we had, had concerns before about, uh. Line of sight on that access, but it looks like that was, that was taken care of. So, um, pretty, pretty, pretty simple subdivision, so. I have no questions.
Why move that we accept a final plat for a four-lot subdivision in the A-five zoning district. Located west of nineteen-hundred road and south of E road. Uh, P L N twenty-two dash zero four eight, the Mazur's L L C subdivision, and authorize the chair to sign.
I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Austin, is that plat ready?
Uh, yes.
I'll swing down and sign it later then.
All right. I think I have it, I've been kinda trying to. Find stuff, uh, with Kate's absence, but I think we have it for you.
Very good.
The next case is, uh, P L N dash zero seven three Holt. Uh, on December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, the B O C C approved the preliminary plat for a four-lot subdivision. From an approximately thirty-six point nine-two acre parcel. With frontage on Cedar Mesa Road, accepting a final plat as a ministerial action by the board to certify the conditions of the preliminary plat. Having met the right of way and is required for the subdivision, and a quick claim deed will be provided, dedicating the point seven eight nine acres. In B titled to Delta County, staff has reviewed all of the submitted documents. And consulted the applicable agencies that are responsible for all the conditions, staff finds the final plat to be in compliance with the required conditions. And all required final fees have been paid, to date, staff has not received any public comments on this project. Uh, staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners accept the final plat for P L N twenty-two dash zero seven three Holt subdivision. And accept a quick claim deed dedicating the right of way of point seven eight nine acres for Cedar Mesa Road. And authorize the chair to sign my own plat.
Question, comment, Commissioners? No, I think this, uh. It's fairly, once again, fairly simple subdivision, this does, uh, this does clean up that corner that, uh, down there. Cedar Mesa Road, it's kind of a, a, a tight corner now, this will actually clean that up and allow for, for better use, a better. Corner for that road. Um. John, do we need to do this in two separate motions, or motion, find a plat, or, and then quick claim deed, or?
Uh, that probably makes, sorry, I don't have all that in one of us. Um, that probably makes sense.
Okay.
Cause you're separate issues, you're accepting them.
Right. Okay.
Yes.
Um, then.
I have no.
Okay. Uh, then, uh. I'll make a motion that the board accept the final plat for P L N twenty-two dash zero seven three, the Holt subdivision, and authorize the chairman to sign the final plat.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, and then, uh, I will also make a motion that the, uh. Board accept the quick claim deed dedicating right of way, uh, point seven eight nine acres. For Cedar Mesa Road and authorize the chairman to sign.
I second that.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. So done. Mr. Hanson, anything else for the?
Those are all the cases that I have for your consideration today, thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a few minutes before ten-thirty. With County Attorney John Bearse will recess until ten-thirty, thanks everybody for sticking around. Well, I've got ten-thirty. We're gonna come back into session. Um, five, December twenty-twenty-three. County attorney time. County Attorney time, Mr. Bear.
Thank you, uh, good morning, Eric, good morning, commissioners. I have one item for the board's consideration that's more, this morning, and that's a resolution to authorize the purchase, uh, the chair's signature on the contract to buy and sell real estate and the county attorney's signature on closing documents, uh, this is in regarding to a purchase and a ultimate boundary line adjustment property owned by Mary McCarney, um, and Delta County, it's, uh, adjacent to Delta County property, this is another portion of property that is just uh, south of the Delta County fairgrounds, this is kind of the last, likely the last piece to kind of complete that, uh, that section, uh, there down to, uh, the river. Uh, which I think is a great addition for, for Delta County, um. This party's property is both south of the river and north of the river, this is essentially the portion that is adjacent to Delta County property, um, that is north of the river and then it goes out, you know, into basically subdividing the rivers or splitting.
Centerline of the river.
Et cetera, yes.
As it exists today.
So, um, you have the resolution, you have the, uh, signed, um, contract to buy and sell real estate, uh, that Mr. McCarney has already, uh, signed, I'm happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
Questions, commissioners? Don, you have one?
Though is is this, this is the the triangle going up?
If you look at.
Um, and then and then there will continue to be the, the little jog down there at the bottom, then, is that, is that?
That's correct. Okay, so we'll have that little jog, but then everything else will be centerline of.
Uh, that little jog is what we're looking at.
This one here or this piece here?
This.
Right.
Okay, right. If you look at it on the plat map, it looks like that.
So, on your, on your map there, commissioners, it's, it's late, it's transferring parcel, it's just like three acres and you have just a, this is a, it's a triangle there.
Okay.
Of course, parcel B is what we've kind of referred to as the Maloney property, or the Maloney property's already been adjusted several times, so it's now kind of all the way down south of the, of the fairgrounds.
Okay. This secures river access to the public. Fits in with master plan. And as we finish up, uh, long-term planning for the fairgrounds is to be a great addition. Fish ponds and so forth, trails.
So, I'm, there we go. My computer's not been playing nice with me this morning, so I apologize.
Oh, good.
Now, the plat, plat is, is a little bit harder to read, so. Just trying to figure out exactly what was going on here, okay.
That makes sense now?
Yep, makes sense.
Like?
Be great, great access for the fish pond down there.
So, I, just the more information, I started the boundary line adjustment process through the planning department, so I filed that application. And, um, this closing isn't scheduled to build until February of two thousand twenty-four, so it's a little ways, but we get, so we've got some time to work through the process.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Nope, it's good to me.
Why move that we approve the resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, the County of Delta, State of Colorado, Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash R dash?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. It's a resolution to authorize purchase, chair's signature on contract to buy and sell real estate and county attorney's signature on closing documents involving the purchase and boundary line adjustment of property owned by McCarney and Delta County.
I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. It's the resolution that all three of you will sign. Sign the, uh, practice form. Thank you for pulling all this together, of course.
Yes, definitely, just, um, well, the, the, the signature date.
Anything else for me?
No, I think that's, uh, I think that's all I have for the board's consideration this morning, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. Anything else for the board this morning?
I have none.
Hearing none?
None, we'll adjourn now, thank you, everybody, we appreciate you guys being here.
Yeah.